My name is Mary Pyong-Gass and I live in 321 West Forest Street. I'm here to speak against the granting of a certificate of appropriateness to 301 drivers. I live directly across the street from the Flatiron Building. Today, I drove around town and I saw the immense destruction of the tree branches, trees falling over, sheds falling over, the effect of wind. You wish to put something on top of a 100-year-old architectural treasure. There is no concern for the neighborhood. There is no justification according to the Secretary of Interior standards. There is an absolute danger of falling of a solar collector on my house. As you can imagine, I would not be very happy if the solar collector fell on my home, which was built in 1882, and believe it or not, it's older than I am. But at any rate, I do not wish to hear someone who is the owner of a building to claim that something is worthwhile. A building is there for several reasons: to house people, to house equipment, to house whatever needs housing. So for anyone to say that this is an improvement to put a solar collector and wind turbine on the top of a 100-year-old architectural treasure, treasure, excuse me, tree, built by A.W. Lay, does not sit well with me. It is not an addition that is warranted by historical preservation standards. Let's be honest, we are not putting up solar collectors to benefit the neighborhoods. And any preservation should be to benefit someone or something. We have people here from the HUB, we have people here from the Keweenaw Museum, they have a right to be concerned. They have things that will, without stopper stores, disintegrate, disappear, become illegible. They are not acting for something that is impossible. Perhaps something that can be done a little less extensively, something of that nature. But for somebody to tell me, put a wind turbine, solar collector, on top of a 100-year-old architectural treasure, to me is hypocrisy. I could use the word heresy. And as far as these people in back of me, many of whom I've known for years, put a drug treatment center next to Bethlehem Catholic High School, of which I am a graduate, and saying publicly, putting it in the newspaper, that there are addicts at Bethlehem Catholic High School? Well bless my heart, honey, if you've been to a Catholic high school, you know better than to do so soon, because you are taught to have respect for yourself, for your body, for your neighbors. I think it comes time when council has to say what is the most important thing that I do as a council member. And that is to take care of the people of this community who have lived here, love to live here, and will continue to live here. To be very careful with your vote, I trust that you will all do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? We will move into the agenda. Item 6, Old Business, Members of Council, Old Business. We move to Communications. Communication 7A, Disaster Relief Funding Hurricane Irene and Tropical Storm Lee.
Disaster relief funding for damage caused by Hurricane Irene and Tropical Storm Lee became available because of a disaster declaration by Governor Corbett. The funding available is to cover expenses for emergency operations conducted during the storm and repair costs for damage to public property. In order for the city to participate, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency requested an agent for the city be appointed, and it is requested that a resolution appointing Fire Assistant Chief Michael Sankowski be adopted as the agent for the city.
Comments? Resolution will be placed on a local November 15th agenda. Have to click to read additional communications. 7B, into the record please.
A memorandum from the City Council Solicitor dated November 1st, Christopher Spadoni, City Council Solicitor, appeared before the zoning hearing board on Monday, October 31st, 2011, and the letter dated October 28th, 2011, to Constantine Lupus, Chairman and members of the zoning hearing board, was entered into evidence. Attorney Miles, Council for Penn Venture Capital, called Dade Dejusinto, Councilman, for testimony. Attorney Miles asserted his standing objection to the October 28th letter. Attorney Spadoni was advised by Attorney Miles that the testimony for the zoning appeal would not conclude October 31st. Attorney Spadoni stated that this matter may be discussed at the November 1st City Council meeting. Attorney Spadoni is advising that possible courses of action are, one, intervention in the zoning appeal as pending; two, intervention in the zoning appeal after the zoning hearing board decision; three, to not participate and take no action. Attorney Spadoni is advising that if intervention is not made until after the zoning hearing board decision, this would limit council's objection to the record that's made before the zoning hearing board. If intervention occurs prior to the zoning hearing board's adjudication, this would permit the introduction of evidence and the making of a record. Attached to Attorney Spadoni's memorandum are two draft resolutions for council's consideration.
Thank you. We'll discuss this issue in a few minutes. We will move to reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get into the report regarding continuous improvement, I thought I'd give a brief update on some of the issues affecting the city as a result of the October snowstorm. As of right now, we've got, PPL's made a lot of progress yesterday and today. We've got 1,616 households that are still without power in Northampton County. For what it's worth, I happen to still be one of them. 969 folks in Lehigh County without power. So for those that are calling to see how much power the mayor has with PPL, I've been taking a lot of showers here at City Hall and other, so, but I think that they're making real progress and hope that we can bring much of this to a close tomorrow, and we hope at the latest by Thursday morning. This was perhaps one of our most challenging winter, or snow, can't even call it winter, but snow or weather events that we faced in the city. And I just want to give a lot of credit to all of the departments within the city that worked so closely together to limit the impacts on residents. We were able to set up a warming center at both Calypso School and the Fowler Center. It was a decision that was made by both Red Cross and Northampton County initially not to set up these centers, which was a surprise to us given the amount of calls that we had gotten to 911 for requests. So we were able to work in conjunction with the Bethelmary School District to set up a warming center on Sunday evening and was utilized by up to, at one point, as many as 25 or 30 folks at a time. So I want to give credit to our Health Department and to the Fire Department and the School District for making that happen. And we also had a police officer there over the evening, as well as EMS was there present if necessary. So the 911 comm center did a wonderful job, not only dealing with all the outages and dealing with folks requesting need of assistance, but also just, there were so many limbs down and intersections and roads that were impacted, it took, they were really the, you know, the center of the action in working with our Public Works Department and police and fire to make things happen. Parks has been giving us a lot of assistance as well. But in particular, we've got, on the street side, we've got a lot of questions about what the city's plans are to deal with some of the tree limbs and debris that are still out in the streets. Our number one priority was obviously to get the limbs out of the road. We didn't necessarily pick them up, but just to move them to the side, given the amount of limbs that were down, just so cars could pass safely. We're now, we still have, despite, we still have some limbs that continue to fall, so we deal with that on a case-by-case basis in order to keep the roads open. But we have, we're utilizing all available equipment and manpower to now begin the mop-up process to try to bring these, you know, bring these tree limbs in. We extended the hours yesterday and today of the compost center. We are going to have to close the compost center for new materials tomorrow and the next day, because we've obviously got to begin to work on, you know, mulching and creating more space for additional tree limbs. So what we will be doing as of tomorrow morning, I want to let council know, and perhaps the paper can publish it, we will do a press release as well, that the, we will make a drop-off area available next to the Tice Cornfeld Recycling Center, basically in the parking lot of the driving range, where folks that, during all hours, whether it's during the day or in the evening, will have an area cordoned off of which people can distribute their yard waste, only yard waste. We don't want any, there's not a dumpster there for household trash or any else, it's for yard waste only, so we can begin to collect it and try to utilize some of the efforts on the part of the residents to bring that there, and then we will then move it over to the, to the recycling, to the compost center as well. But we do have six crews. We've got three crews, three crews working on smaller debris, yard waste, and three crews working with larger front-end loaders, et cetera, to deal with some of the larger debris throughout the city. And it's going to be, you know, a long effort, there's a lot out there. We will also be using two of the city's yard waste, the garbage trucks that were made available for recycling, so we will have crews available on both of our garbage trucks to go around and pick up some of the smaller stuff throughout the city as well. So one, sort of, a group of unsung heroes that I think deserves special recognition is that we had 17 intersections yesterday morning that were controlled manually by police officers out in the intersections for yesterday's rush hour. And I think it made, it was probably difficult for them, and certainly difficult for motorists to get around the city, but having those officers out there at our busiest intersections at the busiest time of the day made what would have been a disaster, as I think, a whole lot more manageable. So I wanted to, you know, send out my appreciation to those officers publicly. But also, our electrical bureau figured out, if you know that, most of you are aware of the fact that it was the intersections of Third and Windot, Third and Broadhead, the Hill-to-Hill Bridge, the Five Points, some of the busiest intersections in the city that were out, and continue to be out even as of last evening's rush hour. But through the creativity and innovation of our electrical department, we were able to set up generators on the fly, to hook up just those intersection lights, the traffic lights, to small generators so that they would function normally and be timed properly for yesterday and this morning's commute. So there were a lot of communities in the city, MacArthur Road, other areas where they just put, where they had some of the busy intersections acting as a, were in sort of a, on the honor roll with the, or the honor system with a four-way stop, which we all know that if 378 had to operate as a four-way, it would be a complete nightmare. So due to creativity and a lot of team effort on the part of police and the electric bureau, I think we took what would have been a rather disastrous situation and really mitigated the impacts on the community. And I want to thank them and want to recognize them publicly for their hard work. I think we've got a lot of great employees here in the city who really rise to the occasion when necessary, and I think the last three days have certainly been a wonderful example of that. So I'm very proud of them, and if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them now or, you know, in written form.
Any questions for council?
Okay. Speaking of good employees, we're going to move on to Continuous Improvement. This is a presentation that's somewhat overdue. It's one that we wanted to schedule for some time, but, you know, due to other issues that have come before council, and frankly, this Continuous Improvement team being real busy, we haven't had an opportunity to pull it off. But I'm going to speak briefly, and then most importantly, I'm going to turn it over to our Continuous Improvement leader, team leader within the city, Kristin Wrenrick, and as well as Chris Boujack, and perhaps Dave Brong, who are going to speak a bit about Continuous Improvement and the progress that we've made here in the city. This is an effort that we began in earnest back in 2007 by, the presentation's going to mainly focus on what we're doing now, but since this is the first formal presentation that has been given before City Council, and again, I appreciate council's opportunity to discuss Continuous Improvement. There have been some employees that have spent hundreds of hours on this effort, and there are certain employees that have literally spent thousands of hours over the course of the last five years to try to improve the processes in the city, to find really, to find hard, to eliminate waste, find hard savings, as well as soft savings within the city. And they can, I'm going to let their efforts speak for themselves, and they can talk a bit about that. But this was an effort that began along, in conjunction with Air Products and Chemicals. It's often said that government should operate like a business, and we all recognize that there are some challenges to making that reality, but we do recognize that any organization, public or private, has opportunities to improve oneself. And we hadn't been doing a particularly good job here in the city of doing that on a formalized basis. So through the assistance of both grant dollars and volunteer hours on the part of Air Products, which is a leader in the private sector of Continuous Improvement, the Global Director of Continuous Improvement, a gentleman by the, who's here this evening, that I want to introduce and publicly recognize, a gentleman by the name of Chris Boujack, who was the Global Director for Continuous Improvement, is one of those individuals that has spent thousands of hours here in the city as an Air Products employee, and now, and I don't want to get him in trouble with his former employer, but he is now a retired Air Products employee, and since his retirement, has spent even more hours here making sure that Continuous Improvement got off the ground and has been successful here within the city. It hasn't always been easy. It is most certainly a culture change. Again, this is not an effort that had ever been undertaken here in the public sector, here in the city. It's been, you know, it's been tackled at various levels in government, sometimes more successfully than others. But, and I'm very proud of everyone that's been involved in this. I can't thank Chris for, Chris Boujack enough for what he's done. And, but it starts really with our Continuous Improvement team, that are a group of dedicated employees that in addition to their normal duties and jobs that they have here in City Hall, have volunteered to be a part of the CI team, to work together in a cross-departmental, cross-functional way, to, again, look, go to the area where the work is done, and to try to come up, use the proper tools, to come up with a process, to streamline and be the most effective and efficient that we can. Some of this is by way of delivering greater services in a more effective way, and some of it creates very real and tangible hard savings as well. We have tried to create a culture of setting sort of high goals for ourselves and recognizing that you're not always going to achieve those goals, but if you fail, that's fine. We're going to do a root cause analysis of why the failure took place, but dust yourself off and get back in the game, and let's see if we can do a better job next time. So that is, I'm very proud of the team for the culture that they've been able to create in the city and for the results that they've been able to achieve. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin, our fearless Continuous Improvement leader within the city. You want to talk about a thankless job. Kristin Wrenrick has it, but she's done it very, very well, and she's never wavered in her commitment to this program. So Kristin?
Thank you. As the mayor said, my name is Kristin Wrenrick. I've been with the City of Bethlehem for 13 years now, specifically in the Health Bureau, and I've been part of the Continuous Improvement Initiative for about five years now. Tonight, I'd like to highlight what Continuous Improvement is all about, to define Continuous Improvement, talk about the history here in the city, and then I'll move on to some specific examples of some of the initiatives that we've done throughout the years. Starting with the definition of what is Continuous Improvement, or CI. It really is about changing and improving existing work processes and services and making them better. And it's doing so by engaging people who are doing the job and improving the job. It's very much a team-based approach. It's not upper management coming in and dictating how things should be done, but it's really engaging the people who are doing the job in finding the solutions and solving problems that they face every day. It's by creating focus, by finding and targeting key work processes and areas for improvement. This year, each department was challenged with developing their own CI plan, and within that plan, they identified key target areas that they wanted to target in 2011 for improvement. It's also about helping us learn from solving problems. Today, we were talking about the issue with the snow. That's something that we would do lessons learned on, to make sure that we look at what went well, what didn't go well, so if anything would happen like that again, we'd be able to act accordingly. And lastly, it's doing these things at a rate greater than ever before. So I really think, in summary, those five bullet points really summarize what Continuous Improvement is here at the City of Bethlehem. Now moving into the history, and the mayor talked a little bit about this, it really began with a partnership between the City of Bethlehem and Air Products. As most of you know, Air Products is a local Fortune 200 company. They have a global Continuous Improvement program, and we were really lucky to have their expertise, them lend their expertise to the City of Bethlehem. They did so by opening their doors and offering their training program to the City of Bethlehem at no charge to us. And it all began with upper management going through Continuous Improvement and introductory training. The department heads, the mayor, went through this training, and after the training, the mayor thought about all the benefits of bringing such a program, all those benefits that could be brought to the city. After the training, he decided that he wanted to create a Continuous Improvement team with various representatives from the different departments, and he wanted us to go through CI training so that we could bring back some of the tools and techniques that Air Products uses, that we could bring those back to the city. So we formulated a team, we went through some CI trainings, and in 2007, we began running what we call CI events. An event is basically a high-energy blitz, it's a team-based approach, where we bring in the people that are involved in doing the job, they form a team, and we have a trained facilitator from our team work with them on improving a work process, or if there's a problem or issue they're facing, we brainstorm some solutions and talk about how we can implement those solutions. Up until 2011, it was basically an informal way that we identified which areas we would target for improvement. As I stated earlier, this was the first year that we had all department heads working with their bureau chiefs and their employees to develop CI department plans for their specific department, and that was what we worked off of through the year, their targeted areas for improvement. So we formalized things a little bit than we had in the past. So why should people care about CI? We have citizens and our taxpayers who have expectations of the services that they want delivered, but at the same time, they don't want to see their taxes increase. So in order to balance these two out, you really need to look at your organization and try to minimize the waste that's in the organization. Try to look at your processes, your services, and make things as efficient as possible. And this is really what CI brings to the table. Without CI, it's not possible to have this win-win situation. So how do we do this? At the forefront is, on the left-hand column, you'll see people. Without having people engaged, CI wouldn't be possible. As I said earlier, it's not about management coming in and dictating the way things should be run, it's really about engaging the people in this process and having them, you know, have a seat at the table and talk about how they're frustrated with certain things and bring their ideas, you know, and have the facilitators listen to those ideas to implement solutions. It's also about leadership. Having leadership engaged, having leadership hold people accountable. Without leadership, the CI program wouldn't be what it is today. As well as the focus, the focus on targeting different areas for improvement, the learning, as I stated earlier, constantly looking at lessons learned and how we can apply those to other areas, having the implementation, and then using the methods to solve the problems. You know, as the mayor alluded to in the beginning, you know, creating an environment supportive of Continuous Improvement hasn't always been easy. When we first started the program and first started running our events, we had people that were a little bit resistant. You know, asking people to challenge the way that we're doing things, asking people to change a work process when they may have been doing it that way for 20 years, isn't always easy. But I think we've addressed some of those issues by getting more and more employees trained in Continuous Improvement, trying to have them become more knowledgeable about the process, engaging people in this process, you know, engaging as many people as we can at CI events. So all these things together, having, you know, at the forefront of what we're doing, having the benefit shared, all of these things have helped move it into, you know, being more integrated into our culture here on City Hall. Okay, next, I'd like to talk about our status and activities. As you can see, this is something that's departmental-wide, or city-wide, involving all departments. If you can click on that hyperlink there, I'll just show you an example of one of the plans that we have for the year, so you can see what I'm talking about when I'm referring to these departmental CI plans. Every department was tasked with this, and the specific example here is just showing you just the purchasing plan under administration. The department head, Dennis Riker, had identified the mission of that organization. We had them talk about what the future state was, the current state. If you can scroll down. Sorry, I know it's large to see on the screen. They had to talk about what their targets were for the planning period, and then they moved into their specific tactics and then their measures. So each department had, like I said, had developed these plans. We had a day-long retreat early on in 2011, and we'll plan on doing the same for 2012. We also have a core team, which the mayor also discussed. We have seven members that represent the various departments in the city that sit on the CI team, that put a lot of time and effort into this initiative. Their role basically is to prepare the different bureaus, the areas that we're going into for CI events, they prepare that organization, they facilitate the improvement event, and then they help the leaders embed the new process into the organization. We also have a CI organizational champ, which this was something new that we brought to the table this year. Dave Brong from Water, Sewer Resources also sits on the CI team and serves as that liaison between the team and the leadership. And lastly, we have a training program. We have the CI introductory course that Air Products had run. So far, we've had 125 employees go through this program. We actually have two of our team members that are now trained to deliver this program, so now we can start doing this program in-house. The ultimate goal being that every City of Bethlehem employee would be going through this training, so that they at least get the fundamental concepts of Continuous Improvement. In addition, we have specific tool trainings that we've had members of the team go through, as well as individuals who have gone through the CI intro course, they've expressed interest. Some of them have also gone through specific tool training, so they can bring back into their work area these techniques to improve their processes. And lastly, right now, we have a supervisory training that's going on right now. We have, in the last few years, a lot of new supervisors and positions, and we wanted to make sure that we're giving them the skills necessary so they can supervise their employees effectively. So we have close to 30 supervisors right now going through a four-module training, and that's something, again, that we hope to continue. This is just a diagram, just to show you the progress that we've made through the years. Starting in 2007, we only ran four CI events. We were slow getting started. This is when the team was forming, when we were going through training and learning the ropes. So 2007, 2008, we only conducted about four events those two years. Then in 2009, we moved to 13 events, and kept creeping up, 2010, 14 events. And to date so far, in 2011, you can see that we're at 26 events. So we've close to doubled where we're at last year. So I think that's something to be proud of. Overall, 61 events have been conducted throughout the inception of this program. Just to provide a snapshot of some of the different CI activities in the past and ones that are currently underway, we have a purchasing action team that meets on a monthly basis, and we, right now, we're looking at reducing transactional costs. We have looked at permitting cycle time and have reduced that through one of our CI events. We also have a citizen feedback system known as action tracking, which I'll talk about in one of the next few slides. We've made some improvements to that as well. Space planning events, to make sure that office layout is laid out effectively, that files are organized. We did that in Community Economic Development, and right now, it's currently underway in engineering. Water and Sewer has done several process improvements. They're looking at the one-call system right now, they've made work orders electronic, they've made standard operating procedures for their facilities, so their mistake proofing, so mistakes aren't made when turning valves. The Health Bureau, we received a grant two years ago to do a Continuous Improvement Initiative, so we looked at our mission statement, we also conducted a needs assessment with our community members to find out what they think the Health Bureau should be, what services they think we should be providing, what they feel are their most pressing health needs, and then we developed our strategy based on the results of that survey. And Community Economic Development, they're right now looking at improvements to the loan process. IT, we recently formed a subcommittee to look at strategic planning for the IT department, since basically every area of the city depends on IT, and they have limited resources, we need to make sure that they have a strategic plan. Right now, we're looking at miscellaneous billing, we're making improvements to that system, making sure that things are standardized across the board. We're collecting bills in a timely fashion, and we streamlined how we're collecting on late payments. And lastly, Human Resources is working on employee performance appraisal, so for the first time, city employees will be receiving employee performance appraisals and feedback on their performance. Now moving on to the financial benefits. As the mayor stated, there's both hard and soft benefits. Every CI initiative that we do, we look to measure the success of that initiative. Sometimes it comes in the form of soft benefits, such as reducing the cycle time or reducing transactional time, and other times, it comes in the form of hard benefits, where we can actually see the actual cost savings. Here are just some examples through the years, the first few years of the program, of some reductions. These are cumulative savings here. If you look at the first bullet, there's some electricity consumption reductions, things that were done, such as streetlight repurchasing, traffic signal energy savings plan, electric rate reductions, and LED use. Moving into the water operations side, there was a leak detection program that saved almost $200,000. And then on the sewer operations side, a few things that were done there, biogas optimization, eliminating the need for fuel oil through increased methane generation, supply chain optimization, consolidating vendors... optimization, consolidating vendors, negotiating, and then oxygen delivery system upgrades, which not only saved money, but is also reducing the carbon footprint. I also have two slides in here, just from the 2011 plans. One thing that the mayor challenged all department heads to do this year in their CI plan, he wanted to see some cost savings, and he challenged them to find $500,000, looking at both decreasing expenditures and increasing revenues. So these are just some examples, just from 2011 to date. On the decreasing expenditure side, in water, we have optimizing meter reader routes, that's using the GIS system to make sure that the routes that the meter readers are taking are the most efficient routes, that they're not crisscrossing all over the city. This is not only saving time for our employees, but...